What's going on with those, what those are and how?
Good morning.
One more time. No one wants to show their face this morning. I was just asking for a wave if you hear me. There we go. Great, great, great. Okay, we're gonna start this all over again. Again, I want to say good morning and welcome to our, this is May, our May community monthly meeting. We're gonna get right into it. Mr. Smith, um, we have our tax commissioner, Daniel Smith here. I know a lot of folks have gotten their tax assessments, not tax bills. And so we wanted her to come up to address what they are, what that is, how to begin to, um, deal with it. In a very procedural manner. So would, uh, we're gonna let her go, she's gonna answer some questions like we have it. Um, well, she's gonna be out of here because she has another, uh, appointment. So we'll have her out here by eleven fifteen. Come on, Daniel. Thank you.
How's everybody doing this morning? I'm running this morning, but I do want to take time. First of all, thank you Commissioner Davis for inviting me to be here. To clarify, because everybody had some concerns, needless to say, what you received in the mail is not your tax bill. It's your assessment notice. That's basically estimating how the assessment's office valued your property. Okay? And so it's not your tax bill. It is an estimation of what your tax bill could be based on the value. You do have a right to appeal. So usually, I think it might be a forty-five day appeal. It should be on your notice. And you can, I think the name of your assessor is on that notice as well. And so you can reach out to that assessor. If for some reason you can't reach them, you should always contact the main number and request to speak to someone to make sure you can get through. You can imagine a lot of folks are calling him right now. But you can always just go up to the office. They're at the same building as us, one twenty-one South McDonough Street. And that's annex three. They're on the fourth floor. And we're on the second floor, but that is not your tax bill. So if you are disputing your value, you need to deal with your assessor. Okay? And then, you know, appeal it. I can't guarantee you need to justify your appeal that I do know. Um, and then let them take it from there. Okay? What I can reassure you of is this year, everyone is gonna benefit if you have a homestead exemption on your home. So if you have a homestead exemption on your home, you will qualify for the homestead uh, relief grant. It's a homestead tax relief grant, HTRG. The governor has approved that grant this year. I can't guarantee it's gonna go beyond this year. But it is already done for this year. And so you'll see that reflected on your property tax bill when they go out in September. Okay? And so that'll be an actual dollar deduction on your tax bill. Okay? So suppose your bill is two thousand dollars and that credit has calculated to say five hundred. Your bill will not be two thousand. You'll see that credit of five hundred and your bill will be fifteen hundred dollars. Okay? So folks are gonna see on average, probably about four or five hundred dollars off of their bill this year, maybe more. Because it'll be a discount or a credit based on every military on your bill. That's what we were told by Department of Revenue. So if you have multiple militaries that apply your bill, that credit is gonna apply up to eighteen thousand dollars of value on your home. So that's gonna be a nice credit for everybody this year. Okay? Any questions?
No, there's questions.
Yes, sir. I'll be sixty-five the end of the year.
Okay.
Do I need to in person prove that I'm sixty-five or will it?
Right, right. You don't have to tell your days, say if we're on birthday and even if we did, not everyone who's sixty-five qualifies for senior exemption, right? Not everyone who's sixty-five owns a home. But if indeed you're sixty-five and you do own that home, yes, you qualify as long as you're sixty-five years or older on January one of any given year. So if you turn sixty-five at the end of this year, that means January one of twenty twenty-four, you'll already be sixty-five. So you will qualify and it'll reflect on next year's tax bill.
But I still have to go in?
Yes, sir. Or you can go online.
Okay.
Yeah, you can go online to our website and you can apply that way as well. It'll give you the opportunity to upload your driver's license. That's really all you can.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
Yes, one online.
Okay.
Question here. Question online?
But if you guys have any questions, don't hesitate. You can reach out to our office. Needless to say, we get a lot of assessment questions as well. We'll answer as best we can. But again, the assessor's office is who you really need to speak to if you have a question about the value on your property. Okay? Um, but we will, we're available. If you have any questions, you wanna ask any questions about how this credit is gonna look on your bill? Right? You can at least, we can estimate it for you. I can't give you anything concrete because the military hasn't been voted in yet, right?
Right.
But we can kinda estimate, give you an idea. This is what this credit could look like on your bill in September. Okay?
Two things, Mr. Smith, can you explain what the exemptions are, what, what that really means and two, how the values are assessed?
And so.
From state and tax assessment in your role.
So go back to your first question, what those exemptions are. And you say that when you.
You mean the exemption, he has stated there's multiple types of exemption. Good deal.
So clearly, there's a homestead exemption that's your basic homestead exemption. If you own your home, you prove you own your home and you reside in it. Now, you can't just own it. It has to be your primary residence. And you can only hold one homestead exemption, period, anywhere. So when you get that exemption, that has to be the location of your primary residence. It can't be a rental property or anything else. And you can only have one. And we do verify, right? So you have one homestead opportunity. That's one exemption. You have your senior exemption. Anytime you're sixty-five years or older on January one of any given year, then you qualify for that senior exemption and then it'll exempt you from the school tax, right? Veterans exemption. I see a hat in the back. Uh, and so there are various levels of veterans exemptions, right? It depends on your level of, um, your disability. So you have to have documentation from the VA to prove what that is, right? There are often times that someone brings us a letter in because they have retro benefits. And so we address that when you bring your documentation. Those are the three main ones. I know you'll see, they're all on our website. You'll see a lot of exemptions. Some folks don't qualify for. We currently, as a county, don't have any floating exemptions, right? Um, sixty-two people looking, they're like, I see one on here. If I'm sixty-two years old, well, the, the income level is so low. Very few people would qualify. And so, but we're glad to again explain every exemption and clarify which ones you qualify for. Just contact our office, okay?
Same part. How are the assessments? I think some of this, how's the values assessment?
So I'm not the tax assessment.
There we go.
Right? So I'm not gonna answer that. Um, I can tell you, it's based on, in general, the fair market values in your area, right? That's about as far as I'm gonna go with that because I leave that to the chief appraiser.
State, correct? Pardon me. That's from the state and the local tax assessor.
Yes, that's the state of Georgia and our local tax assessor. That's not your tax commissioner's office. We bill based on how they value. But we don't set the values on your property. And there are different, I mean, there's a variety of things that they use to base that value, right? Um, but you'd have to contact them to get some clarity on that. Okay?
So you've got three minutes. Any more questions?
Yes, we have this website. Our website, W W W dot Clayton County G A dot gov. And then from there, under government, just find the tax commissioner's page. Okay? You're welcome.
Any questions online?
Uh, Judy, this is Judy Taylor. Good morning. Good morning. You, you know I would have a question. Um, well, also it may be for the commissioner too, is there a concern that possibly will have a lot of people have to go into foreclosure but are have issues because many times it's thousands of more dollars or maybe twice and time, you know, the percentage has gone way on up there. So we've got people that probably do not have that kind of money set aside. And I know they have time to work on it because they won't have to pay the bill till the fall. But still, that's quite a lot of money for some people. Well, is there any chance that we think we may have quite a few foreclosures due to the fact that they, you know, uh, been unable to pay that bill when it comes to you?
So let me say this, um, and this is just me as your tax commissioner. It's not our goal to watch people fail. It's our goal to ensure that we're here to serve our public, right? So if you need help, that's why you call us. One of the worst mistakes to make is in fear not to reach out. If you have an issue paying your bill, contact us. We work with everyone. So if you've got a legitimate need, there are ways we can work with you. That's all I can say to that. We're not gonna sit by and just watch people not be able to pay and not be able to keep their homes. That's not my job, right?
And that's, and that's good to know. And that, that's great. And it's good to know. And I think we, we need to get the word out about that to make sure people can reach out to someone to get help if they need it. And I, and I think that's great.
Yeah, if you have a billing issue, just don't hesitate to contact us. Um, we'll help in any way we can to ensure folks. But I will say this, that homestead tax relief grant that the governor has, uh, approved, that's gonna help a lot of people tremendously this year. So I'm hoping that that in and of itself is gonna help to curb the hit this year for our residents. That's gonna be a nice credit for a lot of people. When I say that it's gonna apply to every military on your bill, there are some, you know, some people that are gonna really benefit. I mean, everybody's gonna benefit, but those that have additional military rates on their bills, that's gonna be a big help, um, to reduce their tax bill. So I think we'll be okay.
Right. Got about two minutes worth of questions if you need it. She's gotta cut. Anybody else online? Anybody? Did you have another question here? Do you have another?
Yeah.
No one?
I have a question, uh, Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
So Freddie Hittenfield, when housing prices go up abnormally twenty, thirty percent, sometimes it's a little bit higher. Any consideration by the board of commissioners in conjunction with the school board to roll back the military rate so that homeowners don't see this abnormal spike in assessment?
Sure. Um, the, the board of commissioners, I believe we've rolled back the military rate for the last five years. As far as the board of education, that's a discussion that you have to have with that board on how to roll back the military rate.
What's your point net?
We have nothing to do with that. We have been rolling back the military rate. We rolled it back last year as well. Like I said, we don't ask, as Commissioner Smith said, we don't control the assessed value on the homes. Though we like our values to go up on our homes and stuff, but we have to realize. Oh, somebody's got their mic. There's a, there's a tax burden that we have to incur. So, but as far as rolling back, we're always wanting to look at that. We wanna make it as easy uh, and as comfortable on our citizens as we can while also taking care of our burden here in the county as far as our police, our first responders, and a lot of the other obligations that we do have. We have to remember those tax dollars pay for these services in Clayton County. Any other questions?
Hi, I have a question. Um, and I don't know, this is Darlene Banks. I don't know, um, if it's the right um, time to ask, but I'm calling about like in our communities, um, I've noticed that there are spike of, you know, people leaving certain things. It could be couches or, you know, big garbage bags.
Nope. So that's refuge side, excuse me, on the refuge side, we're talking. I tell you what, we'll get to that here in a moment.
Thank you.
That's what she asked him. She asked to get it to another engagement. So I wanna make that any, any questions that you all have that she can answer for you right now. And then we'll come back to that. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on assessments, home values, property taxes, military, well, not military. Anyone? Once, twice. All right. Mr. Smith, thank you for coming and explaining this to us. And we're definitely gonna have, having that. We know that. So thank you.
All right.
All right. Now, now we're gonna bring up, uh, Chief Roberts to discuss, you know, what we have discussed with our crime, with our refuges that we'll get to and other, uh, points.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, District Board. I'll be brief. I see my captain is on screen and our community affairs and the A's on our. Uh, first, let's talk about crime. Um, I'm pleased to report to you for the last four consecutive weeks, we've seen a decrease in overall crime, which is great as we move into our summer season. But with that, and summer being just around the corner, we anticipate some increases as we have uh, some folks that will be dealing about not in school and having some opportunities that, uh, might lead to a slight increase in moving, taking actions to reduce that. Overall, theft is still the major driver of our crime statistics. So I encourage everyone to be responsible with their, their items and secure them as much as they can. Uh, of course, with, uh, guns and firearms being the items of choice, we need to secure those as much as we can. We had our first gun buyback event last week, which I believe was successful. Uh, we were able to take in seventy-five guns. And with that, we plan to hold another gun buyback event during the summer, uh, June twenty-fourth in partnership with our district attorney's office. The purpose, of course, are moving guns. We often have, uh, citizens that have weapons in their home that they've had for years. They have no intent of using them. They know they're unwanted, but they don't know what to do with them. Why is that important to the police department? Well, one of the crimes that we measured are burglaries in addition to our thefts. And oftentimes when we have our burglaries, firearms are taken from those houses where there are multiple firearms and the citizens really don't want them there. So what a better opportunity than to, uh, partner with the DA's office and the police department and turn those unwanted weapons in for payment in the form of gift cards. Twenty-five dollar reconvenance. Uh, we pays a hundred dollars for long guns, rifles, and seventy-five dollars for handguns and twenty-five dollars for flares. And all those funds go directly to the citizens. You wonder what happens to those guns. They get destroyed. We can't use them. We can't resell them. We have no intent. The condition is just to remove them from the availability of being stolen or in a household where we might have accidental discharges and injuries to our pages. So, uh, with that, that'll bring me to my last quick item. I'm sure Ms. Taylor will be glad to hear this. Uh, Ms. Taylor, the quality of life task force has met once again in reference to one of our favorite properties, Carroll Woods. We anticipate seeing positive movement in that area in the next sixty days or so. Um, there's some things going on at the property that will mandate movement in that area. And I didn't, can't get too detailed, but just look for that before counting this table and others in the Carroll Woods area. That'll take me to your sector commander, Captain Gary Flynn, who is with us virtually. Captain Flynn on you. And then we'll get to the community and A's on Sergeant Brian.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Uh, good morning, everybody. And first of all, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. Um, Sector Four, uh, like the chief was saying, you know, across the county, we've seen crime being reduced. Sector Four has been kinda leading the charge on that. We've, we have seen, uh, quite a reduction. Um, the last, the last couple of weeks, I think I've only had, had reported one burglary. Um, for the last probably six weeks, we've only had one or two per week prior to those, these previous two weeks are entering autos or way down. Um, or even our violent crime on Sector Four has been, has been considerably less. Um, the only, the only crime, like the chief said, the only crime that we're really seeing, and it's even reduced, but, uh, thefts, just general thefts, you know, uh, you know, packages being stolen or just items being left, you know, people going into a store and laying their cell phone on the counter and, and, you know, when they realize they left their phone in the store, they go back, phones, their phone's gone, something along those lines. Um, in, in general, the, uh, crime, like I said, on Sector Four is, is down. Um, and we have been having, it seems like an increased cooperation with the community. We've been getting calls from citizens. We've been getting calls from businesses and that has led to us being able to apprehend, uh, suspects. I know uh, we had been having an issue with catalytic converter thefts. Um, approximately, I think it was three weeks ago, we wound up catching two people in the act, uh, and, and apprehended both of them stealing catalytic converters. And I wanna say they had, they had hit twenty-two vehicles when we actually called them. So it was a, a, a good effort there, um, on the part of, it was actually two, two different sectors, officers that combined to, uh, actually make this happen and, and catch those people. So, um, mirroring what the chief said, you know, with school getting ready to end, we do expect to see an increase in, in crime, just crimes of, of opportunity as, as, uh, there are more people out there and, and, and opportunities for crimes to occur. So we just ask, you know, the citizens just to, to please be vigilant and give us a call. Uh, you know, call nine-one-one. You don't have to. You can do it completely anonymous if you want to. Um, you know, just try to be as descriptive. And we ask also that, you know, don't try to intervene. Um, you know, cause what we're seeing is now, you know, most of these criminals are armed. So we would rather you just be a good witness, you know, take, if you have video or a phone, you know, take, take video and that kinda thing and be a good witness. Don't go out and try to intervene with the, with the suspects on these. Allow the police to come out there and do that. Um, with that, that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Uh, this is Judy Taylor. Um, I wanted to say thank you to the police department and Dakota enforcement for working on our apartment issue. I'm looking forward to hoping we got good news and looking forward to seeing the good news. Also, I wanted to mention, cause Captain Flynn and I have been talking, we've had an issue with a, a big dumping of a, a lot of trash and garbage right on our main thoroughfares on the right of way. And, uh, uh, there was, uh, a mail in there and items, of course, that had an address and everything too. But due to the fact that we did not have a, a witness that was willing to come forward and testify, or we did not have video of who actually did that, uh, all we could do is report it and everything too. And then, of course, it's my understanding that if you don't have a, a lot of evidence and everything, that many times it's, if it gets as far as magistrate court is thrown out anyway. But yet again, we have that issue. I've heard that in certain places, it doesn't really matter whether or not you were seen dumping it. If they find your mail or whatever your name and anything, they're requiring them to at least clean it up and possibly have community service or something like that. And since it's so difficult to do and we have so much of it, I'm wondering if we can look into it to make it a little bit easier to require, cause our residents actually wound up, cause refuge control, like everyone else is shorthanded right now. So our residents wound up having to get a garbage, garbage people, get it all cleaned up and take care of it, which was great, cause I admire the people in Sherwood Forest for doing that. But I'm just saying, it'd be great, cause these people are gonna keep on doing that. They just dump their trash garbage right out there instead of paying to have garbage pickup or something. It's just a comment and a wish, I think. But thank you to Captain Flynn though for listening to me and putting up with me through all of that.
It's all, uh, Ms. Taylor, we love your input. In reference to that though, I would like to comment in the past, I know that officers who usually respond to those incidents where we, we've located trash without identifying them inside, we usually make our best effort in that moment to have the offender meet back with us. Now, if they left the scene, it becomes a lot more challenging. I will say this, uh, when I talk about Tara Woods, know that our magistrate court judge is involved in that process now, and she is very aggressive with holding people accountable as it relates to littering and dumping. So what you described might have been the way things were in the past in court, but from what I'm hearing, uh, those individuals who come to magistrate court having to respond for littering and dumping are facing much more aggressive and stringent charges and fines.
Thank you so much. And I hope that is the case. And, um, I know we do have good magistrate, uh, magistrate judges. She's been really serious about, uh, eviction cleanups and, and about also about, uh, cleaning up the apartment issue because the Tara Woods apartments was one of those almost three hundred worst apartments in metro Atlanta area. And that's not a list we like to make. And that's one of those things we don't want the, you know, want to have the publicity for. So it's great when that happens. We take care of something finally after all these years and everything else too. Somebody, you know, has taken between the police department, the code enforcement, the neighborhood magistrate court and everything has taken to, uh, do something about these apartments. But thank you for all y'all do. I wish we had, I could wave a magic wand and provide enough money to pay everybody what they deserve so we can keep our great people here in the county working and everything. So for the commissioner, I'm just saying, please look at your budget, find what you can to help out our, um, all our departments that need more help. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. I think, uh, Sergeant Ryan, did you have anything from the community affairs unit?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm out of field today. Uh, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, uh, this year. Also, uh, like the, uh, chief advised, we had a successful gun buyback. Uh, this, we had a suc- suc- successful gun buyback and next tentative date will be June twenty-fourth. We have several events that will be, uh, taking place, uh, during this year. We have, we still have to have the upcoming for the national night out, the faith forum, the, uh, what do we have? It's the national night out, the faith forum. Our two main events and the open house. And we also have, you know, the shop with a cop. We have a lot of different events that are gonna be coming up. Um, and we want you guys to, you know, keep a lookout of our website and on our Facebook and our Instagram pages, cause we are active with trying to keep the community up going with what we have going on and, and acts of transparency, what we have going on in the county. Also, uh, we will be starting our next, um, citizens police academy. We're gonna start it a little bit earlier. Uh, towards the end of August into September, we'll be starting. So we can get an early start on that because we have a lot of different events that will be coming on. So you guys that want to be involved with that, we have about nine people that are already registered for the class as we speak. And if you wanna get involved, you can hit us on, uh, I'll put it in the text at community dot affairs at Clayton County G A dot gov. And I'll, uh, forward you more information. And that's all I have, chief. Uh, I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. If there are no more questions for the police department, I know Ms. Banks had a question probably related to refuge control. Do we have anyone else from code enforcement for refuges? And Ms. Banks, if you would, can you repeat your question?
Yes. Um, first of all, forgive me, I mean to you, but I want also, um, echo what the young lady has said. I wanna thank the police department. I do. Cause I remember out here, I'm in Alderwood's and the crime has reduced, I mean tremendously. I have not heard any out here for that. So that part I do wanna echo and I wanna thank you all, the police department, the sheriff department, all of you all for that. I, my concern now has turned to our, um, I guess the refuge out here and the property out here as far as, um, people dumping, like lady said, a bag of trash. I mean, you know, I've called several times and my heads go up to, um, I believe it's the refuge department. They did come, couches, tables, they picked it all up. But I still just wanted to, um, let them know that it's becoming an issue, you know, and it's Alderwood's. And I felt like Alderwood's was like a forget, a forgotten community. Um, the grass, of course, is just so tall and we got kids out here that when you come around a corner, my thing. my thing is, I'm concerned about them, because we do have a lot out here, you know. And I don't know if that's something you all can handle. And my final thing that I have in my community, because it is a small community, when they built the homes, they built the long fence to, you know, to come straight back. And it's whoever's on the other side of some type of apartments, I don't even know the name of them. Don't even know how to get to them, because there's no way, but they've cut through, the, the fences including broken down the one behind my house. And I, I'm like, I have a concern, because if I put up my own personal fence, it's not going to connect to what was already put up out there. So I don't know how to handle that. I don't know if that would be the apartments on other side issue or, or what. You know, I, I don't know how to handle that. I don't know if that makes sense.
Actually, it does, and I've just been notified that Code Enforcement is already aware. They're just trying to distinguish if that area is county property or private property. And Captain McDonald of Code Enforcement is already aware, booking on the Commissioner's office. So just be patient.
Thank you.
They will make their assessment, I'm confident they'll reach out directly, back out to you with an update.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions for PD or Code Enforcement since we went down that, that road? Miss, don't get out of the way.
All right, don't go far. All right. Thank you all for these questions. Again, I want to thank Chief Roberts and the staff of the Gun Buyback Program. It was, it wasn't a success out there. I, I went out there, a lot of long rifles that were out there, a lot of handguns. So we, we, he has some firearms in his possession that will not be used in the Commission of Crime here in Clayton County. So I want to thank him for that. And also, I want to thank you all for calling in and just giving us information about what's going on in the county. As far as the policy of life standpoint goes, cleanliness, dangerous situations, that's what we need to have. And I think the meeting we had, I want to thank Chief Roberts again for the Policy of Life meeting we had yesterday. I think you all are going to be extremely happy moving forward. We got together as a complete unit, which is the first time we've done that since I've been a commissioner, with the judge, the chief of all pertinent, necessary departments, to begin to figure out a plan and begin to handle, not just handling situations, but handling them aggressively. So I think you all are going to be quite pleased at some of the activities that will be coming down the pipe. What do we have here next? I want to bring Parks and Rec, Troy. You want to talk about what's happening here?
Hey, good morning. You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I am also out in the field today. We had our fishing derby. Yeah, opening, opening for the water, Slappy Splash Water Park at International Park is going to be May the twenty-seventh. May the twenty, maybe twenty-seventh, pardon?
This is, we're getting a little bit, can everybody hear Troy okay online? You're.
Yes.
You are, okay. Continue, Troy. Repeat what you just said about May twenty-seven?
Yes, sir. May twenty-seventh will be our first day that the water park will be open. We will kick that day off or end that day with fireworks at dark. We've got a good fireworks show planned for nine o'clock roughly dark for that Saturday, Memorial Day Saturday. We will be open Memorial Day Monday. Normally, the water park is closed on Mondays. However, it being a holiday, we will open the water park and let you guys enjoy it on your day off. We have several, I think I have spoken in the past, several improvements to the water park expansions that Commissioner Davis was the spearhead of, and certainly appreciate these. We've got a lot of new things at the new water park, just to make improvements and keep, keep improving year after year. That's pretty much, pretty much it for, for, for this district. Commissioner Davis, is there anything specific you would like to talk about?
We have especially that we have a seniors, is it a seniors event or the employees event at the water park?
Yeah, that, that, that event is in July. It's gonna, it's gonna be July, the, I want to say it's the seventeenth, but well, you know, that information is on our website at claytonparks.com. We do, it's strictly for seniors. You have to be fifty-five and over to come to the water park. It's on a Monday. No children will be there, and fifty-five and over citizens will be able to come to the water park free of charge if you are a Clayton County resident. Clayton County residents will be allowed in the water park fifty-five and over on that Monday. Thanks to Commissioner Davis, who was again the spearhead of that. And hopefully the seniors can get out and enjoy the, the park at that time.
So, so repeat one of the things that Troy told, do not bring your grandkids and your kids, leave them somewhere. Some supervised, but leave.
Yep, this is strictly for, strictly for your enjoyment. And so you can get out there and float around the lazy river or go down a slide and, but yeah, it's strictly for seniors that day.
And what day again is that, Troy?
May, May the seventeenth.
July seventeen.
Excuse me, July the seventeenth, at a Monday, July seventeenth.
And that's for who? That's for the seniors?
Seniors.
No joke.
Fifty-five and over.
We don't want to send, we don't want to send any of your kids out there. We'll, we'll, we'll have to do something back. Okay. We have a question here.
Hey, how are the updates and upgrades coming at the Lake Slappy Rec Center with the locker rooms?
Yeah, you know, that's, that's, that's a project that's kind of hit a couple of roadblocks. We do apologize for that. I'm sure that you've seen the signage out there. But basically what we're doing is ripping up the entire bathroom floor, shower floor, and putting down a, you know, an updated non-slip flowing floor leveler that goes into a drain. We had a problem with standing water, you know, people taking showers and it would, the, the water would not flow into the drain. So we had to do something about that. And, you know, instead of putting a Band-Aid on it and, you know, trying to do the floor leveler, we have put additional drains in and a complete new, nice and pretty floor in, in the entire showers, men's and women's. So it'll be a, a, a nice upgrade. You'll be pleased when you do get in there to use it.
Also, Troy, can you speak as well, speak as well on the tennis center? And what our plans are as far as pickleball, pickleball players? And how that we are installing some permanent pickleball courts in there and as well as upgrading it?
Yep. Yes, sir. We have seventeen courts at International Park and eight courts in Lovejoy and a couple of courts over in the Flat Sholes area, a couple of courts over at the Independence Park area. Due to the wear and tear on the courts and the age of them, we are going to totally redo all tennis courts in Clayton County. That means tearing up the asphalt, laying the new tennis courts down again. That will include new paint, you won't have any cracks in the flooring, new paint. There'll be pickleball, permanent pickleball courts at International Park. All of the other courts will have a pickleball lay, layover that will be both, that you'll be able to use the court for both tennis and pickleball. But International Park will have dedicated pickleball courts.
Great. So I think you all will really enjoy that, and it will be an asset to the community. So anything else you have, Troy?
Uh, no, just check that website, you know, we've got a lot of events this summer, from fishing derbies to moving in the parks to Wet and Wild Day. So. Get, get, it was a very successful one a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, looking forward to the next one will, will be even better.
So everything is looking good. We're moving forward. We want you all to begin to utilize these facilities as much as possible. There are some beautiful facilities that we are installing here in Clayton County. We want you, it's your tax dollars, using, we want you all to begin to utilize those facilities. Last thing, Troy, can you give the pricing on the memberships? You have a pop of your head to the record.
Yeah, all right. So first we'll start with the seniors. The seniors are five dollars per year. So that, that didn't, I didn't stutter on that one question. So that is five dollars per year for seniors to be a member of all of the recreation centers and as well as the senior centers. So, you know, if you are interested in taking swimming lessons or something like that, you, you're able to utilize our pools for five dollars per year. The most cost-effective membership for non-seniors would be our three-month membership, and I believe it is fifty dollars for the three-month period. So all of our memberships are relatively inexpensive. You just have to look at them and see which is the most beneficial to you, whether it be a one-month membership, a daily membership, or, you know, daily pass, a one-month pass, or a three-month pass, depending on how long you want to utilize the facility.
Great, great. Anything else we need to add? Any questions for Parks and Rec?
I just want to comment on the, there are a few things, a few classes you pay for, but that's the best part of going around. You can't, you can't find anything perfect for the value of the money that even just some of the yoga, spin, water, zumba is just fantastic.
Great. Those are things we want to hear. We definitely want feedback from you, not only the negative, but positive, what we're doing and how we can enhance the, enhance it for you all. So thank you, thank you. Anything else, Troy? We good?
I think we are. Just let us know if we do need, you know, if we, if we don't know, we can get it fixed. You know, if it's broke, feel free to let us know, so we can get something fixed if it is not, does not meet your expectations.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Code Enforcement Refuge, we have animal control on? Okay. Am I missed, did I miss anybody here? Well, let me go through a quick floss update. The welcome signs for Clayton County, that's, that was kind of a legacy project, one of the previous floss. We're finalizing the initial locations of those signs, so we're going to be putting some welcome Clayton County signs up as well as really trying to clean up this area. The VIP complex renovations is in its final design stage, so that will be going out to bid very, very soon. So hopefully the VIP center, the VIP complex and amphitheater over at the Lake Slappy Recreation Center hopefully will be done next summer. So that's what we're hoping for as well. And then we have Virginia Stevens House, we are building some set up upgrades on that property as well. So we're really trying to enhance this area and what is broken due to tricks. So anything you all have, please let us know. Is that what I have? And that pretty much is it. We want to open it up to questions. Any questions? Yes.
I just want to thank the Police Department for the flood drive. Give way to one real lot of thoughts. What about Mayfest? What's going on?
Mayfest is happening.
It's the nineteenth, but what all is going to be there?
Mayfest. We're asking, a question's come up, Mayfest and what is going to be there? Let me look quickly. Let's see if I, let's spell right. Mayfest twenty twenty-three.
SOS.
Okay, we have the SOS man?
That's the grand finale.
I'm giving you all that it's coming to me.
It's still forthcoming from what I have here. I haven't gotten any more of information other than the SOS man.
So from what I'm hearing, we're gonna have a good time at Mayfest, culminated with the SOS man. How's that?
You could, you could call Tori Schroter, tense, and her number is seven seven zero.
Seven seven zero.
Four seven two.
Four seven two.
Seven six.
Seven six.
Three eight.
Three eight.
And she can give you additional.
And Tori Schroter can convey Mayfest information. Okay, so we have that.
Where's this Mayfest supposed to take place?
Mayfest is going to be down at the.
Lake Slappy, the park.
Lake Slappy International Park. I always want to say. Where do the house again?
Ten to two, I believe.
You're correct. Ten to two, I need to come up here just to, so ten to two, Mayfest.
Yeah, she is the, the T-shirt, right?
Yes. We have Mayfest T-shirts. Any other questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Davis, this is Janice Arcaria.
Mrs. Arcaria, how are you? I'm wondering, I said, did I do something? You have not spoken today.
Being quiet. I just wonder if you have any updates on the Urban Village project on the former Walker property? I heard that they made a presentation at a local church, but I don't think that event was widely advertised.
That one wasn't completely on the Urban Village. We have been in discussion with them on what they want and what we're going to allow there. It is progressing positively, I can tell you that. And what we are going to do is once we get to a point, we'll put out a big rendering of what we're going to take place and have that over there. And I will have a special meeting for that as well.
And regarding Mayfest, I'm, I'm not at all totally knowledgeable, but the Senior Center, except that I'm a regular user. I know that they did say that apparently they had arranged for certain people to be carpool drivers or something, because they were saying that this last Friday was the last day to pick up the passes, I guess, for the drivers. And I think I saw a sign also that said if, if, if there were tickets or anything that were sold out, or if you couldn't go, I think there's a Zoom option too. I haven't actually gone online and looked for that, but I think there was some kind of notice at the Griswells Center that there would be a Zoom option also, or at least some kind of online option, maybe not Zoom.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that. I'm not aware of that at all. I've not heard anything about that. But I will take, I will look into that and see, and we will put it out in the newsletter if we do or do not have that.
Commissioner Davis, this is, this is Judy Taylor again. I had several other things, of course. One thing I wanted to ask you about, as always, I know that they're putting lots of sidewalks on Long Terr Boulevard everywhere where they're doing construction and everything. And I know you're a big advocate of having sidewalks everywhere. But I want to see about getting more sidewalks up in the northern, up in the part up here, maybe from one thirty-eight up to I seventy-five up in there, which is where you get way more walking traffic up in here. So I'm looking forward to us getting some sidewalks. I think it'd be a lot safer for people, and they might actually go to the crosswalks and things if we had decent sidewalks up in this area too. So I'll let you answer that first.
I agree, and, and we are pushing for that. We did receive a grant to begin to discuss pedestrian safety. So that is a great, great benefit here. I've been pushing for any time we have any type of construction or we go or new construction or old construction on nineteen forty-one, I've been advocating for eight-foot wide sidewalks on that area. On that area, yes, pedestrian's safety is of high concern to me. And we've got to begin to deal with it in a certain way. We have a new floss coming up. That's something to be considered for that as well. So we've got to begin to do it. And yes, I'm going to keep pushing as long as I'm in the seat to begin to put sidewalks there, not only there, but on all our major quarters.
And the other thing, another thing is, I was glad to see you at the Mutt's Strut, which was a very good activity, talking about International Park down there because. That is something that I do appreciate, you know, that you had a lot to do with to build us that beautiful dog park down there next to the rec center in International Park. And it was well attended. It was a great day and and everything too. And it gave me an opportunity to talk to you one minute or two about the up, about the zoning that you knew that this was coming. And everything that got tabled about the building, the townhouses on one thirty eight in Jonesboro. And I do know that it was tabled and it's been put off till the June board meeting and everything too. And I just wanted to make sure that you knew that we still had off a, a quite a few people that are still interested in this and they want to feel comfortable about this. To where they don't feel like they have to keep coming to meetings back and forth and everything. They want to know what's going on with this, you know?
No problem. Uh, yes, they have been tabled twice and I've allowed them to table it. I'm not going to just pull or deny something based on if they want to keep moving forward with it. My view personally is this, right now. Chief Roberts is understaffed. Our Clayton County Police is understaffed. So, and if we begin to look at the numbers, it's something, I forget the organization, but they. Recommend somewhere around two point two to one, that two point two officers to one thousand citizens. Right now, we are sitting at about one point oh two. To Clayton County citizens. If you begin to look at the calls that go out, a lot of his calls. Are responding to multifamily issue, multifamily residential issues. My, my concern is we're not equipped to handle the multifamily right now. Now honestly, I have looked at what they're proposing. On one thirty eight and it's a, it's a beautiful project, but we're not. We're not in a position to accept that project. Like, that's just what it is. So for me, I cannot approve multifamilies coming in this area right now. For safety issues and concern issues for our citizens and also too for the taxing issues on our pollution and fire. If that, does that answer your question, Miss Taylor?
It does. It also, another issue is of course their single family residential areas backed up to all that and all around that property, which and multi. See, you know, a multifamily project would impact them also and everything too. But I'm glad to hear what you said because our infrastructure can't handle. We got a school bus situ, you know. Facility right there that the traffic's got to be where it can move around through that area and our schools all around there. So we had a lot of issues that, you know, that would bring up for that. For that particular issue.
And I, I want to also qualify my statement. I am not anti multifamily, uh, if they're nice coming in. But right now, we're just not, we're not equipped to handle it as of this, as of this moment. And if we took even our. Added in our police from our sheriff's office, from all the municipalities, I think it probably would only take it up from uh, maybe to about one point four, one point five or two thousand. Which is still under, what is.
International Association of Chiefs of Police.
Yeah, International Association of Chiefs of Police that put out that kind of information and statistics. And so we want to begin to look at a lot of this information, a lot of this data when we begin to go through and make our decisions. Just because we like it does not mean we can have it. And um, I'm, I'm going to work always to look at data that. Supports where we want to go, especially with our quality of life and our safety issue.
Thank you for that. And the only other thing I had was a comment about the trash amnesty days that we had. I've not heard anybody make a re, make a report about that, how it went. I know we took advantage of it and everything and it went really well for us, but nobody has mentioned those days that we had uh, and I. It's my understanding they went well, but I just wondered if, you know, if it came from your end there that you've heard that it was very successful and do we plan more of those in the future?
It went extremely well. Um, the one of Lake Spine, they, they were hauling out dumpsters like you wouldn't believe. Uh, I utilized them as well. We are, we're always going to have those going forward. We have to have those. I think that goes into our keeping Clayton clean initiative. Uh, I should say non-public initiative that we have. So we, we're going to continue to do those. I'm not sure. Because they had to reschedule one addition, one. Two, I'm, I'm not sure if we have another one coming up. I'll go ahead and post that. District force had theirs. Now, just because district force has had theirs does not mean you cannot take. Your items to another, another uh, location. So we just want to make people aware of that. But also too, in conjunction with that, begin to use refuse. I mean, I was just explaining to a few folks here, I had limbed up some trees. At my home and pulled them out to the curb. And it was quite a few limbs, cut them up so that they could be handled easily. And I go down to refuse, they come back and they charge me a hundred dollars to pull those up from the, from the curb of the house. So that's a great, great bargain. And we want to begin to utilize those. For a lot of our home. They'll take, they'll take uh, furniture, they'll take everything with except paint. Items, gasoline items, things of that nature. So begin to utilize refuse as well for those.
Commissioner Davis?
Wait, one moment. They said how to determine the price? They come out, they take a look at it and they, this is what it's going to cost. So, but they charged me a hundred dollars. And when I say I had quite a few large limbs uh, from, from five different trees at my house. Uh, I quickly paid it. Yes, question online.
Yes, Commissioner Davis, this is Mike Quick. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. Quick. How are you?
Great, thanks. I agree with everyone. Um, the amnesty, trash amnesty day was terrific. I really think that's. A valuable thing to um, add. To what's being done in Clayton County. Um, but what I have a question about is, I'm hoping that you can help um, answer is, I make the trip from the greenhouse, which is on Old McDonough Road. Quite often every morning from there to the new community garden that is um, right off of North Street. And. The route that I take takes me down, I believe it's William Street, which actually connects to where I guess Route fifty four begins. Um, and as you cross the railroad tracks, there is massive potholes, one of them being. Um, I might be exaggerating, but I think you could bury two bodies in. And it's been a problem for the longest time and nothing's been done to address that. And I don't know if that is. You know, because it's a little um, shoot on from, you know, Mc, uh, McDonough Road onto um, fifty four, if that belongs to the city, the state, the county. Who, um, how can I find out who that belongs to so I can complain about it not being paved?
Mr. Quick, where, where exactly you think that pile is on Northern McDonough Road?
It's right, it's right across the Confederate um, cemetery. And I think there's like a Thai restaurant, um, it's been a Hardee's and a bunch of other restaurants. It's like a, just a, a little um, you know, uh, right away to get on to fifty four. Right, it's right at North Street and um, or right where um, North Main Street begins and then I guess fifty four take, go straight.
That is the city of Jonesboro.
All right, so it would be, it would be city property then?
Yes, but now is it on city property or private property? Um, assuming it's city property, correct, or what you're considering?
Right, well, I'm, I'm just saying the road needs to be, the road needs to be um, filled in and paved, but so again, I wasn't.
What I will do is take this and I will pass it on to uh, to the mayor of Jonesboro to let them know that.
Okay. Cause it's been like that for quite some time. I think they did try to fill it, but it lasted maybe a couple of weeks before it got all chewed up again. And. You could, to watch the, even the school buses take that route, to watch everybody try to maneuver that um, is. Quite comical, but it's quite annoying as well.
Understand, understand. And to everyone else, if you begin to notice potholes around the city and the county, please let me know.
Right, I was on another conference call when that was um, raised that, you know, we need to be proactive. To let you guys know and not wait for someone from.
Yeah.
The um, specific office to recognize that.
Yeah, let me know when there are only one body, instead of two. How's that?
Well, I will reach out to the, I'll reach out to the mayor first and see um, if they can give me direction as to who, who is responsible. Again, whether it's. Cause it connects to the, you know, state Route fifty four. So I don't know if it's part of the state or the city or the county is responsible for that little piece of. Road.
Let's see. But okay, thank you for that. We have that. Any, anything else, Mr. Quick?
No.
That's it? Okay, okay. Any more questions we have? We're approaching that twelve o'clock hour. I know we haven't hit the twelve o'clock hour. I want to make sure that I respect yours time.
Uh, this is Judy Taylor. One, I had one more thing and I forgot. Yes, you know, they had the public meeting about the um, uh, what's happening on Battle Creek, the widening, and they had the meeting there. And they talked about all the detours that are going to be taking place in order to do that work. And it's going to happen on Valley Hill, Battle Creek and Mount Zion. There's a big list that they put out and it tells you about all of those detours that are going to happen fairly soon and everything. Even though the project is going to take a good, long while to finish, the detours may start up piece by piece. And so people need to know about those. It will affect a lot of people in the county.
And I apologize, Ms. Taylor. You mentioned that to me Saturday that we were supposed to discuss that today, this Saturday, and I dropped the ball on it.
That's okay. They put out, they can probably, they can get in touch with transportation, Clayton County Transportation Development. And they have a list of all of those uh, detours very easily defined and where they are and where you're going to get a new stop, the street light, all those kinds of things. It's good information people would use.
Right, and she's talking, she's speaking of the development, construction going off from Battle Creek all the way, I should say, from Valley Hill, all the way down to Battle Creek going east. All the way over to Mount Zion Road, I believe it is, going past seventy five. So I will begin to pull that information together. So that we can begin to have kind of a one stop shop for your information. So thank you for reminding me of that, Miss Taylor. Hey, anyone else? Questions, concerns, comments?
One question.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Mark Jones.
Yes.
At the right off of Valley Hill. Okay, you were at our senior meeting, seven. Okay, but my question, we uh, were put on a list. For repavesment of the community and it got backed up. I was talking to Benny Rose on a continual basis, but because of the pandemic, the list allegedly got backed up. And I don't know if there's anywhere I can still find out if we're still, because we were put on the list and supposedly been done twenty two. But we're in the twenty three now and still no information.
What I can do is take, I've got, they sent me the list of side of uh, streets that were going to be repaved. I'll take a look and see which one of that, even in the hopes, what's, what's that street? I know exactly what you're talking about.
It's right on Valley Hill.
So you're talking about on Valley Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I know where the hopes is, but it's, is it the streets inside, 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 I guess. Yeah, okay, so I'll take a look.
Cause you know, they're seeing that they are playing kids and.
Will do good people, put them over there. You got a good setup. Anyone else?
Yes, this is Darlene Banks again, my final, um, and I don't even know if this is the place to ask, but from one thirty eight going up to, I guess, seventy five, I've noticed that there. Are more homeless. I guess they're homeless. Some people just standing, they just standing there, standing, staring at the sky. And it's obvious, you know, you can, you know, they need help. But it seemed like there, it is a different group of people and it's, you know. And I, I don't know if you all have a handle on that or no, or, and I know they need help. Don't get me wrong. I do know that. And you see them and. At the gas stations, on the corner, at the bus stop, you know, and it just seemed like in front of Office Depot, just. On the side sleeping, you, you know, and I don't know if you all have a handle on that or you're aware of that?
Yes, I'm aware of it because I drive by missing as well. Do we have a handle on it? The answer is no.
Okay.
We don't have a handle on our homeless issue throughout America, to be honest. But.
Right, right.
That's also here in Clayton County. What we have to do is begin to address it. And we, it is on my radar to where we're trying to figure out how to address it.
Okay.
Home, there's a lot of different avenues. You've got homeless mothers, you've got homeless fathers, you've got homeless. Single men and women, you've got homeless veterans. And we've got to figure out how do we begin to combat that, especially here in Clayton County. So. I hear your concerns. I feel your concerns, understand and agree with you as well. We have to remember that corridor you're talking about right there is Clayton County, CBS five, Virginia County. But regardless of where it resides, yes, we have a homeless pop, population issue. And uh, we also, and I'm working right now, I'm trying to make sure for the summer months that we have a lot of food pantries that are going to be open inside back there as well.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, you're aware of those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? One more.
I have a question.
Yes, Miss Boston.
Hey, Commissioner, I'm, I'm concerned about the Noah's Ark. It's a lot of holes out there, a lot of potholes. They've come through and they've um, filled them in, but it's still a problem because eighteen wheels are still coming down Noah's Ark.
Correct, and they can cut, remember. Correct, wrong chief. They cannot be coming through there if they're, like you said, or like we know. Trying to get off seventy five and somewhere else. But if they have a destination, they could be coming down, uh, down that road. We are addressing that. We need to. Uh, get folk out there to address it again. We will. Hopefully they did clean that. I had them come out there and cut. Hopefully they cut the uh, the setbacks back a little bit so it looks a little nicer. Um, if you can let me know again where those potholes are, we can begin to address those as well.
Okay, why don't they just repave the whole street?
Monday.
Oh, understood.
Yes, but, but I actually have that on my radar as well and on my list for sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, this is Duncan Family. Uh, we live in Clayton County.
Okay.
Uh, on the um, on Barnesdale. And, and so we wanted to find out about uh, the taxes um, this year. My wife, she's twenty minutes late. She's kind of embarrassed to speak, but I'm um. But I, I need to find out about the taxes. The last several years, the taxes have gone up, you know, incremental, incremental amounts. And this, this past two years or so, it's gone up two thousand dollars. Would, and maybe y'all have addressed that already. I apologize.
Yeah, we did. We actually had the, we actually had the tax commissioner here at the beginning.
Okay.
Exemptions and everything else. Uh, like she said, contact the tax commissioner's office on that. That, how they bill, that is an assessment. And you can begin to look at the exemptions. Now, I can tell you this, and I'm not trying to put it off, but she knows more about this than me.
Uh-huh.
I can review this community meeting at first for the first fifteen minutes.
Uh-huh.
He speaks well about that, where to go, how to contact, the differences in exemptions, um, and how to begin to fight that.
Okay, I apologize. Running late, I'm sorry. Okay.
So we begin to look at that. And if not, um, you can contact my office and we'll put you in touch with our office.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? One more. Twice? Three times. All right. I want to thank you all uh, for. Coming on out and spending your day with us, uh, twelve oh nine. You did well today. Our next meeting is going to be Saturday, June tenth. Saturday, June tenth. Bring a friend. Bring a friend. So we're going to make it happen. But again, I want to say happy Mother's Day to all you mothers, um, to all you grandmothers and seniors out there. Do not bring your kids to. To senior day. That's your day. Any other something, chief?
I just, so you know, Saturday, June tenth, there's also the show on the road.
Okay, yes. And we also have the chairman turn the show on the road on June tenth. So what we'll do is we'll publicize that as enough. That's a great informational piece where he. Talks about everything going on in the, in the county. I try to really, for this, focus on just what's going on in the district. Okay? So if that's it, I want to say. So, if that's it, I wanna say thank you all again, June tenth, eleven o'clock, bring a friend, and any questions you may have, you can always contact our office, so thank you all online, thank you all in person, and have a great weekend.
Thank you.